Was on Friday?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Someone else, it wasn't a commissioner told me that. I don't remember who told me this, they go, they go. To try to be the lead, basically, right? Cause Arbor wants there's some shit like, I don't know why.
No, no. We said it's like.
It's got a shitload of water.
Right, but you know, it's like we told them, well, not like that, we have a cobra. When people want it.
Yup.
I saw that.
Yeah, it's like.
But look how much that core of grass.
And what they got at home.
Yeah, so they were all like quarter three, but just out of town.
Yup.
And then everything east and west always rice. I mean, it's rural.
Right. Well, you kind of think that's a little forward, it's kind of easy one, huh? They're gonna go back to them, of course, they're gonna go back to our.
I can't remember who told me that this is gonna happen, I'm not gonna answer something that.
They're learning, they're learning.
They're learning.
Are you, are you. They said, but the people that were on the zone said, don't give up that. Kind of quite a deal to, for even so. I don't know.
No?
If they didn't hold out.
Well, Benton has a lot of theirs.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Huh? No.
Not yet. Isn't there one of these more at the high school? Some of these AEDs?
What's this one?
Over in Senehan, Ron, we tried to do.
You have to ask, it could be different.
I thought they had one there, but it was inside.
Yeah, these are outside locations. Cause we got one at Highland. All right, it's five thirty. Call this meeting in order, let's have the pledge of allegiance first.
The pledge of allegiance. Is that like, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight, uh, first order of business, we're gonna have a, a couple of recognitions for our past city council members. Rosalie Mosaccio, if you'd like to come up here and accept this, please. Or I can come over to you. Thank you very much.
Oh, well, thank you very much, it was fun to leave with you.
Hold on, we have a picture.
Oh.
Thanks, Rosalie, appreciate it.
And then we have Gerard Bettendorf, but I don't not see him here, so we'll get that to him. And then our next order of business is oath of office for newly appointed city council member Brandon Voight.
Would you write that? I.
I.
Brandon Voight.
Brandon Voight.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of council member.
Discharge the duties of office of council member.
Of the city of Foley, county of Benton.
Of the city of Foley, county of Benton.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You consent? And his official congratulations.
Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, second.
Motion's been approved and ag- and seconded, is there any discussion? All say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? I would like to add, um, Jeff and I are on the personnel committee, two of the three, uh, part-time officers, um, we hired are twelve-plus years of, uh, service already, so we're not getting, uh, someone that has not served already in the police officer's position, so, um, I'm very happy with the candidates we got, so. Anyone else? Motion's been, been moved and seconded, all say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, mayor's comment in open forum, is there anyone to speak on the open forum?
Um, the first one might be AED, but you can shut the door.
Oh, Joel, you're with the AED, we'll just wait for you then.
Pardon?
We'll just wait till you do your thing.
Sure.
Yep, Sarah Molesoff?
This is nice to be, guys. Uh, Sarah Molesoff, two-three-eight Elm Drive, um, so a couple of times this winter, I hosted hot cocoa at the skating rink. There I bring hot cocoa, I bring a percolator and cups of coq, or cups for it, and then cookies, marshmallows, it's a lot of fun. But I had a resident reach out to me and asked if he could bring a barrel to have a fire, to roast marshmallows for the kids. And I said I'd wait for, to bring that up to council and get your guys' approval. It, it would just be a, you know, I'm talking about like just a barrel and have a fire and just kind of like a little homely, like winter feel, you know, warm up in addition to the warming house, but, cause what I do is the hot cocoa is in the warming house with the cookies and snacks, but this way, you know, we could, we were thinking about placing it like on the driveway, right into the Lions Park entry, and then just, cause there's not a lot of traffic there, but just have a little campfire type deal, but due to legal issues and stuff, we didn't wanna do it until I got the city's approval, so I decided to bring it up and see what you guys think.
I don't have an issue with it, as long as fu- uh, s- uh, fire suppression, I mean, have a extinguisher just in case.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with it.
My understanding, he was going to bring the barrel and the wood and like, cause, yeah, we said, well, we don't want any kid, but I feel like everyone is eh, and when I have the hot cocoa and stuff, I have signs on it caution hot and, you know, I take, I feel like people have common sense, you know, when they're at these kind of events, but I, being it is.
Mark, you have any problem with that?
Well, it's a three by three.
Okay.
Size, feet.
Okay.
Ten feet of the building, I don't, not in the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so I, I just want everyone's, eh, it obviously wouldn't be till next winter again, but I know the community really enjoys the hot cocoa events and we, just, just a little addition, a little fun for.
Well, you could let the council know when you're having it too, so it could show up.
Would you come?
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I tell, it's posted, but, okay.
How much adult participation do you have in cocoa nights? As opposed to kids, I mean, firing kids can be a little hazardous.
We usually have, on average, about five to ten families, um, I, I do go through all thirty cups of hot cocoa, and last time I went through probably forty cookies and two bags of marshmallows and I, but part of that's because the marshmallows are kind of left unattended and the kids, so, um, but eh, eh, it's good turnout, most days, but.
I just worry about racial kids to adults.
Right, eh, it's, I'm usually, I'd say if I had to say on average, one parent to three kids, if that makes sense. But the kids are usually over on the sledding hill, and then I, I go back and forth, um, cause I, I want everyone to feel welcome, so I make sure to talk to every single family and all the kids, uh, most kids are sledding versus skating, and then they go in to warm up, and then they have a hot cocoa and, and we mingle and it's fun.
I've heard a lot of good comments about it from people.
That's great. I try to make really, really creamy hot cocoa, so I don't wanna be known as the watered-down hot cocoa, that'd be gross, but, all right, so do I have?
All right, you got our blessing.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Karen Woolsey? Just come up and state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, yeah, my name is, uh, Karen Woolsey, uh, four fifty-one Third Avenue, North, in Foley, of course, um, my issue is, is that often nor- I live right off of Norman, right there in the back. You know, that's where my garage is, and I was coming out about a year ago, and I got in an accident right there onto twenty-three, and they hit me, but they said I was too far out, but there is like a blind spot there on the left where you can't see the oncoming cars on twenty-three there because of that house there, if they got vehicles sitting there, you can't see past it, maybe a snowbank too, and, and there's still kind of an issue there. I know if coming from the right, they have a speed limit thing there, but coming from the left, you can't see the oncoming cars always coming, and that's what the issue I have, it's still kind of a like a blind spot there, I was wondering if they could do something about that, like saying kind of line entrance there or something?
My experience with signage is, you can keep putting signs up and it, no one looks at those signs, I'm sorry.
They don't do anything about it, you just kind of take your chance then?
I, I, I hate to say that, but yes, that's probably what it is.
Cause usually I go the other way, I go toward the right and go all the way around, you know, then you can see the traffic, but right, right there where that house is, if they got a vehicle start part there, you can't see oncoming cars. You know, if they have a sign farther back, you know, would be ideal, maybe they can't do that.
And that's a highway twenty-three issue there.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
So, I, I just know with my experience, um, with signing, they, signs do absolutely no good other than if it's a corner or a turn. So, I hate to say that to you, but.
I just don't like that, but I, I drive it all the time because that's the shortest way out, but it's kind of a hazard too.
Yep. Well, we appreciate your time.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the open forum? Well, here it says mayor's comments, so I'm just gonna say one thing quickly, um, since I was elected mayor, a few of the things I've been doing, um, went, attended Northland Reli- Reliability Project, uh, myself, Gary, Jeff, Sarah, all went to legislative day at the Capitol through the Minne- Minnesota League of Cities, uh, I tired the, I attended the fireman's banquet, uh, Sons of Legion omelet breakfast, Saint John's Soup Fest, uh, Chamber of Commerce meetings, Falcon Bank had a Gold Club breakfast, I attended. I was up in Little Falls the other day for, uh, Minnesota Care Pipeline Safety, or the pipeline that runs through Foley with the oil and everything, if something would happen, how to react to that. And I was at the newly elected officials conference with Minnesota League of Cities this past weekend, so if anyone has upcoming events, let me know, and I will, um, be more than happy to share that with people to help with attendance, or just let people know that something's coming up. And now with that said, anyone else? I guess we're gonna do Advocates for Health, Joel Vogel?
I got here early, so I got a chance to practice, but I'm thinking about changing my name to Sarah, cause Sarah met me, Sarah invited me, and Sarah, you did really well on your presentation, so. I'd like to get an idea about my audience here a little bit, let me just ask a question, how many people in this room know how to do CPR, raise a hands, that's really good, okay? How many people have ever given CPR? That's even better. How many people in this room have had a heart attack or sudden cardiac arrest, raise your hand? Looks like I'm the only one. Mother's Day, May, two thousand and four, I'm at home and I'm in the backyard and I'm digging some, uh, blocks out for my wife and things, my daughter happened to be home from the, from college that day to visit her mom on Mother's Day, and I started a, I'm smoking a cigar, and I, um, feel this heartburn kind of come on, and I said, what did I do, inhale that cigar, I just smoked them because I like the smell of them, so I took and I put it out, and my daughter came over and said, let's quit doing this, and we walked around our back garage, we're walking towards the front, the neighbors are in their, the yard, they're saying, come on over and have a drink, it's Mother's Day and things, and I said, I said, nah, we're just gonna go watch a storm brewing, that would happen to be coming, uh, I live in Saint Joseph, Minnesota, so we walked inside the garage, and I'm, um, starting to have a hard time breathing and, and sweating and, and things, and I got a couple of plastic chairs, those stacked plaque chairs, and I've got one down for me, one for my wife, one for the dog, and my wife comes out and she takes a look at me, and at this time, I'm, I'm hunched over and, and things, and she says, are you okay? And I says, I don't feel well, she said, are you having a heart attack? And I said, what are the symptoms? She says, is your left arm numb, I says, completely, my, my fingertips are tingling, she says, um, are you having a hard time breathing? I says, I'm gasping for air, and then she said what all wives do to husbands, she said, are you going to be a jerk, or are you gonna let me take you to the hospital? I said, I'm not gonna be a jerk, you can take me to the hospital, well, she went inside and got my daughter, this is before cell phones, and, um, my daughter ca- came, came down, and she took one look at me and she called nine-one-one. And my wife comes over and says, you better go tell the neighbors, cause you just said hi to them, and an ambulance is coming, cause they're gonna be all shook up, so she runs over there, and they come over with a baby aspirin, and they get it in me, which is a thing to do. Well, I'm there, and it takes a while in Saint Joe, s- s- uh, Saint Joe's got a population of about six thousand, what's the population of Foley, Sarah? Twenty-seven hundred, okay, the first responders in Saint Joe are the fire department, where, where they call them, is that similar here? Okay, so, the, they have to go to the fire hall, they've gotta wait for three people to come before they can leave in their truck there, and then it came, long story short, it was a, a police officer came, he got oxygen on me, then the fire department came and Andy Losso meltdown in front of me, he's my son's age, and I looked at Andy and said, Andrew, are you qualified to work on me? And he says, he's not dead yet, he's still got a sense of humor, so, they loaded me up in an ambulance, and they took me from Saint Joe to the hospital, three times on the way to the hospital, I started to go out. There was a rainbow coming, the storm, the storm had passed through, and I could see my daughter and my wife following in the car, and I looked at the attendant and I said, not a bad day to die. And he grabbed me and he shook me, and he said, don't you go out on me, and I can hear him say, we got a forty-four-year-old male, a full cardiac arrest, be ready when we get there. Well, long story short, is they got me there, a lot of things happened, three times on the way to the hospital, they had to give me liquid nitrogen under my tongue, and, um, it was a very peaceful feeling. It's the most peaceful feeling I've ever had in my life, I'm not afraid to die, um, I'm thankful I had the experience, but when they got to the hospital, as they were taking me down the elevator, going for surgery, usually the, you get a chance to give your loved one a hug and say goodbye, we here for you, I went out. And if you're gonna go out when you have a heart attack, that's the place to go out, well, they took me in and I had the widow maker, my main artery was blocked a hundred percent, and, um, they, they saved me, and then two weeks later, they went back in because I had ninety, ninety, eighty, eighty, and seventy percent blockage in my heart. So I ended up with six stints in my heart, that was eighteen years ago, and I got to thinking, you know, I gotta, I gotta do something with this, it was laying heavy on my heart as to what I should do with it. And I found out that there's three hundred and fifty thousand deaths a year with sudden cardiac arrest. Sudden cardiac arrest is different than a heart attack, sudden cardiac arrest is Damar Hamlin, the football player, where your electrical part just stops beating and you go down and you're dead. A heart attack is what I had, you have time, you have all the symptoms, with women, it's different than men, they have neck, neck signs, or stiffness in necks and things, and then that's the plumbing, but you have more of a time. But if you have sudden cardiac arrest and you go out, you have ten minutes, and then your heart quits fluttering. And basically, that's why in the first ten minutes, it's very important that people start CPR on you, or they can get an AED on you, cause there, if you're, there's two rhythms that a heart will flutter with, and it, it actually stops the heart, and then it st- comes back, hopefully, and that's, that's how you're saved with, with, uh, with that. So what I did is I, um, I was kind of wondering what was going on, so I, I quit my job, it was pretty stressful, and I went and I ran a golf course, and while I was at the golf course, I, um, was running tournaments for people to raise money, so I decided to raise money for AEDs. And, um, I raised money for twenty-four AEDs that we put out in the community, I thought that we're doing a pretty good job. Well, then Rich Finn, I used to partner mine, and Advocates for Health said, why are we putting, why are we putting these inside buildings because they're locked up and you can't get in the, into them? I said, well, you can't put them outside because of three things, one, they freeze in winter, two, somebody's gonna steal them, and three, some kids are gonna take them, they're gonna put them on their body and shock them and kill them, and that's, that can be good. Well, we come to find out that those three things are, uh, basically unfounded objections, so, what we did is we said, well, where are all the AEDs? So in Stearns County, we, uh, we met with Sheriff, uh, Soike over there, and he said, I don't know where they are, we met with Centricare, they said, they didn't know where they were, we met with the, uh, the county, um, uh, person for emergency services, they said, we got an idea here, well, then we went back to Centricare and we played the BS card, and then they gave us the information, first they said it was HIPAA laws, but it's not, and we ended up finding four hundred and eighty-two AEDs in Stearns County. So we mapped them all out, hired a student from Saint Ben's who went out and visited all the AEDs, and found out that twenty-five percent of them, the pad, the ba- the pads inside them were bad, or the batteries were dead, so we brought them all up to speed. We then worked with a company in Saint Cloud called Geocom, and Geocom took those four hundred and eighty-twos and mapped out for free where all the locations were and created an overlay for Stearns County. So if you have a, a sudden cardiac arrest or a heart attack in, in Stearns County, you press a button, uh, they press a button nine-one-one and an overlay comes up and tells who's ever calling, where the closest AED is. So, we ended up doing at a golf tournament that we did every year, Rich says, well, let's, let's figure out how we can put these outside, so we found a place in Canada that, that they were doing it, and we got in touch with them, so we started putting them in Saint Cloud, the first one was, uh, for three rappin' sartell, we put them out there. And what we found is that they're, they, they can't, well, they can be stolen, but, but basically, we put a Apple i- uh, air tag on there, so if you take it, we can follow it. Inside the cabinet, there is a heater for the wintertime, so, you know, it was like thirty below here in February, we got a hundred and fifty units out in central Minnesota, four of them located here in the Foley area, and we'd had no problems at all. And then in the summer, they have a fan that's inside there that actually blows to cool it, like your cell phone, if you leave it in your car in the summertime, you come in, you grab it, and it says it needs to cool down for a while, same thing with an AED. So, uh, the other thing was, you can't put an AED on somebody and press the start button, you can press it all day long, nothing's gonna happen until the, the AED says that it's time to put, put it on, so. That, that's basically what it is, we end up talking to Sheriff Heck, and Sheriff Brott, and we got them on board with us as well, so as, as we're putting these out there, so. The reason I'm here tonight is to, to let you know what's going on in central Minnesota, we're hoping that the city council looks at this and says, you know what, this, this makes a lot of sense. Haven Township, I met with on Monday, they ordered a unit, I'm meeting with them again on, on, um, next week, Tuesday at their meeting, and they've identified like six areas in the area of that, they can't get their first responders in ten minutes. So they want, they wanna do that, they had some COVID money that there, that was out there for a grant and things, so, what I wanna do is just take a minute and show you how this all works, I have given all the council members and staff over there, this is an article out that was written at Senior Perspective that talks, talks everything about us, there's also a brochure in there, and then the pricing information. I have, uh, copies for anybody that's here today, and I encourage you to take them with you, so how does this work? If, if someone calls and says, hey, nine-one-one, and they say, go get an AED, um, I, I asked someone here, is there one in the building here? Okay, um, maybe the consideration would be maybe to put one in the building here, cause everybody knows we're city hallies and put it outside, so then all the residents can do that. The closest one to here is the Legion, the Legion along with the Lions Club put it there and a couple other people, and it says we sponsored it, uh, on there, uh, there's also one at Coburn's, I don't know if you've seen it when you, if you've ever shopped here at Coburn's and things. We also have one at Jack and Jim's, and the one at Jack and Jim's was used, and, um, the person survived a, a year later, and, um, now you're, a week later, and we felt terrible, and the family called us and thanked us, and they said, you don't get it, we got a chance to say goodbye to dad. Where we're thinking if we don't save him, it's a failure, but that isn't necessarily what happens, so what happens? I'm gonna do this real briefly, so you get an idea, if there's a patient down and you see someone down, by the way, if it's a male, it's an eighty percent chance that that male's gonna have a, a total stranger come up and do CPR on them and start, and send somebody to go find an AED or call nine-one-one, if it's a female, your chance is only fifty percent. People are afraid to get in, involved, they're afraid if they touch their breasts, they're gonna get sued, I'm gonna tell you right now, just do CPR, nothing's gonna happen, okay? So what happens with the outdoor AEDs that we have, uh, by the way, these, the, the metal part, there's three components, it's manufactured in Holdingford, Minnesota, I was at a Lions Club presentation, I got about three-quarters through, and they said, we'll take three of them, we're building the metal cabinets, so we quit making them out of, out of aluminum, now we're made out of stainless steel, we're getting them for less money, we don't gotta go across the border and things like that. The AED that's inside can be any AED, doesn't have to be any, any particular brand that you can use, and that's inside here, and then this is the cabinet. So, if in fact, someone had sudden cardiac arrest, and you were to run down to the Legion and get this, you open this up, it says right here, it says grab, AED, call nine-one-one, says grab here, step two. A siren starts going off, we got that program to go off for thirty seconds, and in here, there's a camera, it takes a photo of the person who opened it up. We do periodically get some kids who look at it, but we'd get a photo, we work with local law enforcement, and then we don't have a problem after we talk to them, okay? The reason it makes noise, we want people to know, so they can come and help, they then take the AED out of here, and then they grab it, and they bring it back to where it is, and hopefully at that time, someone's doing CPR on the individual, and then they come. We decided to select the AED from Defibtech. The reason we did the, have to turn it, can you hear me yet? Okay, the reason we selected the Fibtech is because when you press it on, it's got a video that talks to you.
Training mode, call for help. Follow instructions to apply pads. Remove clothing from patient's chest. Locate pads package in back of AED. Tear open pads package. Peel pads from blue liner. Apply pads to patient's bare chest as shown. Training mode, call for help, analyzing heart rhythm, do not touch the patient. Stand clear, shock advised, charging.
Watch the red light.
Press flashing shock button. Shock one delivered, it is safe to touch the patient, begin CPR now, give compression. Powering off.
I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, a twelve-year-old can take this and get that done, and, and, and have it done that way, uh, because it shows the video and says what was going on. If that's hooked up, I can press this start button on here all day long, and it won't zap the patient at all. The ru- uh, reason we selected the Defibtech is because it also has a chip inside here, that the AED goes back to, to the hospital, and they take it out, and they give it to the doctors, and the doctors can put it in the computer and see what the heart was doing while it was hooked up. Okay, and it has a bag here that actually has got scissors for cutting the clothes, it's got a mask for doing dress, it's got gloves, it's got pretty much everything that you would need to have in there. The other reason we did the Fibtech is because of, um, the company's seen, uh, Carol Lemon did a story on us, and the sales manager, they're seeing what we're doing, and he said, I give you, um.
I'll give you a thousand AEDs for eight hundred and fifty dollars each instead of eighteen hundred dollars, but you guys can't sell them, you, they go out with your units that you have, so that's why we partnered with them. So, um, since we've done this, I've got a list of the locations that we have, the hundred and fifty locations. The 150 locations, also in Ronaby, we have one at Goodfellas. So in the area, we've got the Legion, Coburn's and Jack and Jim's nearby. And we're gonna be looking to put more in the area. Looks like there's gonna be seven in Haven Township, which is just south of you here. Clearwater's looking to do a number as well. We also, this summer, out in the Holdingford, since there's three components, the metal cabinet, the box that is here that has got the built-in fan, it also has got a SIM card, which is a built-in cellphone card that calls, doesn't call 911, because we have to call a service that calls 911, says, "Hey, the AED at the Legion was opened up, start, start people that way." Because then the calls will come in from somebody like that. So that's what we, we had to do for that. And then of course, the, the AED itself. So anyhow, in, in Holdingford this year, we created a unit that's not powered by electricity, it's powered by solar, a solar panel. And in Naples, Florida, where my partner Rich goes in the winter, they ordered 30 units from us in January. And there's a park system down there that's looking at, we're gonna put in 100 down in that, that particular area. In central Minnesota, we started and we went west first. Why did we go west? I live in St. Joe. It was real easy to go to Avon and Albany and then Melrose or to Painesville and things. So we kinda went Cold Spring, ended up with 10. Richmond ended up with 10 that, that they had there. And that list that I gave serves, got, got where they all are. The unit sold for $7,195 for the, the whole system and in your brochure, it's got that price and we hide nothing that, that's in there. Then the ongoing maintenance is $600 a year. The ongoing maintenance includes all batteries, all pads, all upgrades, the cellphone service that goes on every year, it's like $50 a month. A lot of the, a lot of the cities that we work with had said, "Hey, you find an organization to buy these and we'll be happy to pay the ongoing maintenance for each one of those as they go through." So it, it depends on what city wants to do what. Some cities have gotten behind it, like the city of Annandale, and said, "You know where we need one of these? We have a park right down by the lake here in Annandale, we need to put one there." I would suggest that if, if the city wanted to do something like that, we could help you find some more people that would be interested in funding these in, in their particular neighborhood, but you need to know kinda what's, what's going on. That's out there. We have partnered with Centricare in town right now, we, we paid for a study. There's, there's $5,000. They're assessing the tri-county area, Stearns, Benton and Sherburne, to find all the AEDs and there's a, a software program called CARES that the medical people use that tells, anytime there's a call, what was it for? So we're gonna know in the county where all the heart-related calls came in and we're going to map that out and say, "We need to put an AED in this area, this area, that area." I'm, I'm kinda pleased, people say, "Why'd you do this, Joel?" Well, when I was a kid, my dad fell down right in front of me and I didn't know what to do. We shook him, we cried and we prayed, and he came to. And we went and seen the doctor and the doctor said, "Ralph, you've had seven heart attacks already." And he said, "I guess I'll have to quit smoking." And he did. And he lived to be 70-some years old. I do it for my uncle Elmer, who died on the lake out ice fishing with sudden cardiac arrest, my cousin David, my cousin Mike, my cousin Carl, and, and other friends that I've had that have passed away because of sudden cardiac arrest and there was nothing there and nobody knew how to do that. With each unit that we place, we give free hands-only training to, to the groups and organizations. At the very least, I would hope that the city would consider start doing something like that so more and more residents, when you go in a room, instead of getting five hands that go up, we'd get 50 hands that would go up a very high percentage. So, my goal today was to talk and just give you an idea of what these do. People keep telling me, "I've seen them all over, I've seen them all over." Well, that's good. We hope that we continue to see them all over, but I'm hoping that Foley would, would see how they wanna partner with this movement as, as it's coming through on there. The school really needs one. We have introduced legislation to the state of Minnesota. It was passed last year and it was put in the obvious bill by the Senate, but we did not get a hearing in the House. We submitted the same bill again this year. I was told we have a sponsor in the Senate and it should be getting a file jacket number this week. And then we gotta find someone to carry it in the legislation. If we get that bill passed, there will be, there'll be AEDs, three in every school, one in every Wayside Rest in the state of Minnesota, three in every state park and five in every county to do what they wanna do. Since there's 19 billion dollars, we figured this would probably be a good use of some of that money. So, does anybody have any specific questions that maybe I could address right now?
If used, what's the cost to replace?
Pardon me?
If it's used, is it used again or do you have to replace it?
Great question. The, all you have to replace is the pads. And, 'cause pads can only be used one time. Eric Boucher, an officer in Cold Spring, his AED and his squad have been used 20 times.
Is there an ideal amount per population size or per town?
That's another great question. The, the, in St. Cloud, part of the study is they wanna get to be a four-minute city. What they mean like that is four minutes out to get the AED and four minutes back. I'm within that 10 minutes before it could happen on somebody, so that's what they call a four-minute city. So placing them that way. St. Joe, we kinda overdid it, which I'm, I'm pleased with 'cause I live there and I know everybody. There's 15 units outside in St. Joe. But there's nine in Rockville, 'cause they put them at the lakes that were nearby. Cold Spring's got 10. Richmond, and then the sheet gives you an idea. Avon was really good, 'cause the city council took a look at it and they went with the, with the police department and said, "Where should we have these?" Same thing with Sartell. They met with Chief Hughes, who now is gonna be retiring and things, and he mapped out, he did kinda what the CARES was and said, "We need to have one here, here and here." We put one on the outside of a nursing home at, at Sartell because it was on the outside, but there's a lot of older people that, that came there. But that was a good location, 'cause everybody knew, knew where it was. There's a lady that was here earlier I was talking to, she said, "Well, we put one of these out at Briggs Lake and they put it on somebody's property and nobody knows where he lives." I said, "Well, we need to move it then." "Well, you can move it, I gotta take a movement and just plug it in someplace else." So are there any city parks that, that everybody knows where there's, where there's activities that are going? That would be something that you might wanna consider. Is there any money from COVID that, that's supposed to be used for public safety or things that maybe you guys haven't used? I know Royalton, we were doing some things up there as well for that. This is the first you've heard of it. It's a long process and, and I don't get discouraged by it. I, I love it. The first time I was gonna come, it snowed, so Sarah and I had it postponed. I'm sorry to tell you folks, I'm here tonight, it's gonna snow on Friday again. I think you can hang me on that one too. But, but I wanna, I wanna thank you for, for that. The other thing that I gave everybody on the front was a file for life and there's some there, so I encourage you to take these home, put this on your, on your door and fill out the form. So when the first responders come to your house, and this is on your refrigerator, they don't know what they're walking into. They have no idea what, what ailments they have. Is there a male and a female? My wife and I all have, have one of these on there. I've given it to some of the elderly neighbors that have got them too. So if someone comes in, they can be reading and saying, "Hey, this person's got a pacemaker." Good, they know that, alright. Or whatever it might, it just really helps first responders. So I'd encourage you to, to fill one out or put one for, for yourself or somebody else. It'd be another great thing that we're doing. I think that's pretty well it, unless somebody has any other questions?
Does anyone else have any questions?
Will there be, depending on the spot where they go, will there be a pedestal? Will that get mounted to the wall?
This is my demo unit. If you look at the brochure and actually on the front page of this part, well, let's go to the brochure. Inside. Are you pulling one up there or not? It's, it's a pedestal and we had to go to that. Originally, we had, we had two sizes, but their, state law requires that they have to be UL- listed. That meant, we had to spend $20,000 to have someone tell us that this light here, and right now, I bumped it so it's out, this light here and this unit here and, and this stand here, they all work together. That's the way it works. But we, we had it done, so it has to be that side. So someone that's wheelchair accessible, they, it has to be a certain height that they could walk up here, open it up and then take it out. So there it is.
And who determines how it gets mounted with what pedestal? Do you do that?
We work with, with people. A lot of times, a Lions Club or there'll be someone in town that says, "We're going to donate that." When I was at Haven Township the other day, they said, "Hey, we got an Amcon block right here in our backyard." They said, "They're gonna build all the, all the bases that we need." We actually work with Wilbert Vault Company and we, and we use the cement slab they put stones on because it's the perfect size and then we just bolt into that and then the electrician comes out and hooks it up that way. Or you can go right to the sidewalk if you want as well. We, we put some up in the sidewalk.
And that's all built into the cost?
Uh, yes. The, the pad is not and the electrician is not. Otherwise, everything else is, is built into that. Electricians usually about $200, but I don't think we paid, out of 150, we probably had to pay three electricians, 'cause there's always an electrician who doesn't mind volunteering their time and, and help with this cause. It's just one of those things that just makes sense. You know, I, I give my presentation and I'm watching people and their heads are bobbing like, "Yeah, this, this makes a lot of sense." And you're smiling, right? Make a lot of sense to you? Yeah. I don't want anybody to be in a situation I was in. You know, where you're, you feel, you can't do nothing and you don't, you don't know it. But, good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, Jared, or Joel. Excuse me.
You didn't call me Sarah.
Didn't call you Sarah.
And I was, I was hoping you would.
Alright. Number nine. We're gonna have discussion on the Highway 23 pedestrian crossings. We went out and had another bid with Bolton Mink and they came back with a price for us. And Jared, you're here right now with SEH. Did we sharpen up our pencil at all or where are we at on a price with you guys, I guess?
First up, Jared Griffith, SEH, I'm gonna be Mr. Mayor, Mayor Council. I did have a meeting with Sarah Mark this morning. We talked about the, the proposal that was in our packet. Some of the discussion in the past has been about how we're gonna handle the push-button system at the roundabout. And our proposal in the packet that we didn't change is for a hardware connection at that roundabout. Like I said, there has been discussion on if we went throughout of solar. So at our, at our staff meeting today, we did, did discuss what that would look like if we did go with solar there. Random numbers. If we went from, in our, in our proposal for hardware and solar, we're currently showing $7,300 for design. If we went with solar at both intersections, that would be $5,000. Construction side of things, if we, the solar and wired, or solar and hardware is, for construction is $8,700. If we went solar and solar, it'd be $7,100. That brings the grand total down to $12,100 instead of the 16 in your proposal. The reason we are, we are proposing a hardware is there are concerns with the trees on the south side of that intersection with lower sun in the winter months and not always having a consistent sun. That is a, a concern to think about. And with the construction of the materials, you know, that's, that's the big difference here is the mater, in materials. You're looking at probably about 20,000 difference in 2030 in, in solar at the intersection versus hardware. And that cost difference is covered with your, your funds. So, that big difference really, in my mind, I think it'd, it'd benefit the city as far as having that, that, they'll give you the reinsurance of having a hardware connection, having that power basically guaranteed unless that can, and that intersection is taken out. But ultimately, that is, that is your guys' decision on which route you wanna go. So that's why we discussed an option of having that solar at that intersection. Again, that would be $12,000, $12,100 for our design services and construction services for the full project. I would also like to note that based, or, that proposal is also based off of the assumption that we've had our discussion with the contractor, there's gonna be a lead time for this. And so we probably will not get that, those materials until July, August, based on where we're at right now, which is gonna be, I, based off what I, you know, I think, how I think this project's gonna end up. I imagine they're gonna be done with the highway in June. So the MinDOT really won't be there to do any of the, any of the curb removal, or not curb removal, the sidewalk removal that would need to be done for this and they redesigned all the pet ramps, like they did for the original construction. So that is this worst-case scenario. If they're, if they somehow, if we do get the material and it's there in, in like May, July, or sorry, May, June, and MinDOT is there and they take a lead in that activity, I can see us, where they, where they're doing the staking, they're doing the removal limits, they're doing, you know, all that, you know, stuff for the sidewalk. I can see that, that $12,000 going down to $8,500 for, that's a difference in, in construction services. But, construction services is, has always been an hourly fee, so what, what we use and what we provide you is, is what you pay for. So, that was what we talked about today. And if you have any questions, any other questions for me, I'd gladly answer them.
Does anyone else have any questions right now?
I'd like to hear from Jared.
Yeah, I just, I wanted, if, if we're... I'm sure we'll get back to you in a second.
Alright, cool.
Evening, Mayor Council. Certainly just first wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to provide a proposal and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have. Initially, I, I'm, we had submitted a proposal that was in your packets. That was for the, the ETH and Penn intersection. We had some conversations and I misinterpreted the direction and it was actually for two, so Broadway and the other one. So that's on me. But we did put together another estimate here and certainly be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Goldie?
What would your timeframe be on this? About the same with MinDOT as SEH?
Yeah, I mean ideally, there's definitely a value, huge value in getting this thing done as part of that while the work's going on and they're wrapping things up around the project. So I'd definitely advocate for that. Suppliers definitely issues all around, no matter what you're looking at, getting supplies or a long time lead on a lot of different components. So, that would, that'd be my recommendation, if there's any way to get that done as part of the, before the MinDOT contract is closed, that'd be, be ideal.
And your proposal is for solar only?
Yeah, the, the way we've viewed this and our experience with, with other RRFPs around the state, yeah, it is helpful when they have direct sunlight and it's unimpeded year-round. The batteries, what we've found, over time have improved. So, I, I guess it would be up to the council, the way that, that cost-benefit analysis, right? I mean, the cost in the RFB system, that's hardwired versus replacing some batteries more frequently. But yes, solar was what's contemplated for both locations.
What's, what's the replacement cost and how often for those batteries?
Uh, boy, I'd have to look at that. I...
I can answer that.
Don't recall off the top of my head. Honestly, we've, we've had RRFPs in, in service for many, many years and our clients haven't, haven't complained about the batteries being replaced very frequently, so.
Yeah, same thing with, I've got multiple solars out with the highway department and life is normally five years on them. I've got them out nine, 10 years and they're flashing 24/7, so they last. Normally, something gets hit and when you replace it, you get a whole new sign with a new battery and everything. It's, you can't piece it together, 'cause normally it's damaged. So, you get a new battery that way, then you throw one on the shelf and charge every once in a while, so you gotta spare, but that's my solar expertise. Any other questions on this? I guess we're done with, we're done with this, Jared?
Thank you.
Both Jareds.
Jared, do you have anything? Griffith, would you have anything else to add?
Um, no, like I said, it's up to the council on which direction they wanna go as far as solar versus hardware. Hardware's been the, the number one kind of goal, or the direction we've gone since day one due to the candidate being right there in the south, southeast quadrant of that intersection and being a pretty, pretty feasible, um, connection there. But either is possible.
Alright. I would entertain a motion on a direct, or some direction here which way we should go with this.
Well, I guess for, before we make a motion, uh, Mr. Mayor, you've had extensive experience with this. Which way do you lead?
I would lean towards solar, I looked and drove both, um, areas and I don't see any issues with, uh, sunlight or tree blockage there, so. It's like anything, you're at this level, now you go up ten, eleven feet, you just gained five feet of horizon. So, uh, I would go with the solar myself, or with a solar product.
So with the wire that's already there, can that be used for something else in the future or is it just gonna lay there?
I don't think there's any wire there.
Correct, there's no wire there.
Okay.
That was part of the construction, is they'd have to underground or, or tear sidewalk out and put it in, correct?
Yeah, I mean, either way you're gonna tear sidewalk out and, uh, replace, because the, the pet ramps currently are not built for having push buttons next to them. Change the, the dimensions of where landings are, slopes, stuff like that, we'll need, so those, those pet ramps would need to be redesigned. But, uh, to answer your question on the existing cable or fiber there, um, the, the only thing there currently is just the lighting, right, Mark? I believe, right? There, the fibers on the north side, or the conduits for the fiber on the north side, uh, the anti-conduits that we installed with this project. So those couldn't be used for this scenario now.
So we look at both intersections being solar?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
Question I have is, um, responsibility does the state have on those pet ramps? Because the whole corridor is supposed to be aligned for these.
Correct, and that, that is the gap here as far as my range in construction. I, right now, I couldn't tell you who's responsible that is, if it's gonna be the city's responsibility for inspecting those and redesigning those. I don't know, it, you know, um, that's a discussion we'll have with the, the state after, before, during the permitting process.
Yeah, I guess I'd, that'd be a question I'd ask because that was directly in the, um, highway safety audit plan as well. And I believe sidewalks are covered expenditure with the state bonding money.
Should be.
Or are you asking the, you know, the, the materials to reconstruct the sidewalk? Yeah, that should be, that, I, I would think that should be granted.
That should all be covered by state funding.
I was more talking about our construction services, whether or not we would be, or the city would be responsible for, you know, doing all of the quantities for all the sidewalk and doing all the design for replacing those, you know, the slopes and the landings that I got for the sidewalks.
I guess I'd like to look at that because I thought that is what the state told me too, that, I mean, I could've sworn we had a conversation about pet ramps being fine, or those being put in, because they put those temporary signs in. But we might have to do some looking into that, you know, you know, the conversation we had about the signage that's there? I, I maybe have to do some checking.
The signage that's there is the minimal, right now, to get you through, but with the sidewalks being closed, no one can use them. Until the sidewalks get, I don't know if they're even poured, or still need to be put in, the, down the highway, I'm talking.
Yeah, there's sections that are missing.
Right.
Okay.
Sidewalks at Broadway are installed, um, I'm ninety percent sure the pet ramps at all of the, the whole, all around, all around the roundabout are, are-
Just south side is done, north side's not done?
Pet ramps aren't? No, the trail isn't to the north side, I thought the pet ramps were done. But again, those are designed without a push button system, they need to, the landings need to be expanded so that a wheelchair can come up next to the push button and push that, and that push button can't be within the park. So, they still need to be, more likely will need to be redesigned, um, it's kinda like that. And to answer my, or I think to answer Sarah's question was, I'm fairly certain that that material cost is covered by the funds. I, what I don't know is if, since MinDOT was doing all of the inspection for the sidewalks, if they will continue to do that for this, uh, basically rehab, you know? Or if it's gonna be on the city now, since it's kind of us coming in there and installing something. And that's built into that range of that twelve thousand to eight thousand. Due to that big air, or you know, that plus lead time, so.
So Sarah, should we even approach this tonight with this new phone information?
I was under the impression the pet ramps were all good and, and fine. That, and I know, and that's, I don't know, what, what do you know?
I've heard Jared say before, but I wasn't under, I thought we went solar, we didn't have to.
Stupid, because they, they'd be in the same location, so we'd still have to, regardless of which way you go.
The only thing you're changing is the outside of the roundabout, you're not changing the inside, though, at where the traffic flows. You're just making probably a bigger landing area for pedestals and-
Two on the north and south side, correct, I, I think, looking at the design of the median, you should be okay there, yeah.
I don't know, I, I hear, it's like I hear one thing, I hear another, I have no idea what is what anymore, if I'm, be perfectly honest.
Well, I hate to release this to anyone right now-
Right.
-until we know... I guess we gotta know if, what's getting paid for and what's not on the state's side of it, because that's very frustrating.
I make the motion that we table it until we get all the information that we need. There's a lot out there that is undetermined yet.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this?
Let's do our due diligence.
There's been a motion, second, no more discussion, all of four say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, I guess we'll bring this back in April and-
Hopefully.
Have an answer for... Jared, thank you for showing up tonight, by the way, appreciate that. You as well, Jared Griffith. Alright, Police Department report, Katie McMillan.
Um, I'm a member of the council.
Oh, yep, all you.
Um, I sent out the stat report for the month of February, we had three hundred and forty-five calls. And note, we only had twenty-eight days in February. Some things to point out, speed enforcement was up, domestics and assaults were up, and parking tickets, this is the last month of winter parking, so please remember, do not park on the streets between two and six AM. We had fun with police a few weeks ago, uh, we had nineteen kiddos who came and we had a great time. We did some fingerprinting, um, toured the PD and we talked about kindness, um, it was great. That was, I, after the fact, I did receive a grant from the Minnesota Chief Association for that event, for five hundred dollars and that was underneath the consent agenda, so that was all paid for through that grant. Coming up, we have, um, first, we thought, I sent out an email to all the, in reference to the squads, I thought we were in the clear. Sorry, no we're not. We have, our two thousand nineteen squad has another issue that is going to get fixed tomorrow, a wheel bearing went out, so if you see as short a squad tomorrow, that is why. Some events we have coming up, in March, uh, my officers have their first responder or EMR training refresher. Prom is May thirteenth, graduation is June third, um, bike rodeo is June seventeenth, and Rip Your Float Social with Sheriff Heck and I is July thirteenth. So a lot of things that we are working on our end for events, um, and still trying to keep up with all the calls and domestics. Do you have anything for me?
Uh, I do. Contingent on having all three of these officers being hired, I'd like to see more TZD hours.
Yeah, yep, um, coming up in March, right in February, there was no saturations, there was, I think, one in, earlier in February. Uh, March seventeenth over Saint Patrick's Day is the next saturation hours. And I have an email ready to draft it and ready to go out to my officers to make sure that someone is picking up a shift, so yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for Katie? If not, City Engineer Jared Griffith.
Uh, good evening again, I'm Mr. Mayor, Member of Council. I do not have anything other than what we already talked about tonight, um, unless there's a different topic you have for me to, any questions on, um, that is all I have.
Very good, Public Works.
Thank you.
Mark Baffinpus.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. You know what we've been doing, falling snow, so, same as you, Mr. Mayor. People are keeping a pretty good attitude, I think, in downtown, really, I mean, there's always a handful, but deal with them. Um, in your packet, you got-
Can I stop you for a minute?
Yeah.
Alright, I just wanted to bring this out before the council right now. Um, I had one of, uh, a hired snowplow removal person for, uh, one of the businesses or some of the businesses, I'm not gonna name how many. Um, he's just concerned that from the public works side, we're not, we're treating everyone fairly as far as if we're, if, if a business is pushing the snow out and we're picking it all up for them. I just want this brought out now so that if this comes up in the future, that it's been talked about, so we're not gonna have a he said, she said situation going on all the time. I talked to the individual, I said, if we beat you to the business and take care of the sidewalk, we don't expect, we don't wanna come back because you decided to push the rest of the snow out into the street. So, after discussion like this with the individual, he said, that's not a problem, we normally beat the city to the, uh, business that we're working on. So, um, I just wanna make sure that that's what's going on. That we don't, we're not coming back because this individual or business is hired business is pushing snow back out where we gotta go catch it up. It's not our job to go back once we've been somewhere, to keep going for the rest of the businesses within the town. Because what happens is it doesn't go on the snowplow guy, we're gonna go back to the, to the business that hired this individual. So, your thoughts?
It's the same gentleman we dealt with last year, some of you dealt with.
So, I'm just trying to be fair about this, I just wanna get it out and not just be talking behind everyone's back. It's been said at council now, so, that's for now.
He's a big mess that takes our extra time, I gotta pull a loader down to clean up many times when he should be doing something else, so.
That's snow removal, that's what he should be doing, correct?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sorry for that, it's not to bring that up.
In this year's CIP, uh, we had replaced some of our, uh, bucket boom truck. Uh, last fall I talked to the sales rep, last year we did, last fall I talked to him at the Maintenance Expo. Keep an eye out, I, you've seen my email, he had, uh, came up with this one, it's a one year, it'll be two years old now. A rental return truck through Altech, a brother company of Altech. It's what we're looking for, no outriggers, it's three feet taller than what we have. I think you have all the information on the truck, there's comparable price of a new one in there, it's hard to compare to used ones. These are all pretty common, these AT forty bucket trucks. You guys have any questions for me, or?
So I'd never seen a price on this one.
One twenty-seven five, it's on the back page?
Yep.
One twenty-seven five and then there's a fifteen hundred dollar to bring it up from, uh, they brought it up from, uh,
Okay.
Dumba, Kansas City, Saint Joe, Missouri, across the river.
So the new is one, one seventy-something, a new, a new one?
And that is a, if we order now, we'll get a twenty-twenty-seven, they're quoting all twenty-twenty-sevens. They're gonna quit making F five-fifties for a year or whatever and try to catch up on the chip and all that stuff. The guys all went through it, I haven't done too much with the truck, I'll be honest. They all, three went through it, you know, they all spent some time on it separately and together. That didn't know, you know, it seems to be what we're looking for. So I guess with that-
So they brought it up?
The truck, they brought the truck, they're bringing it to Minnesota, so the guy brought, he was on his way to Moorhead, so then he dropped it here. He just chalks his trucks, otherwise it's going to Shakopee. Yeah, I told Sarah that before, because I didn't want someone to say, hey, the truck's here.
So we gotta come up with another...
Ten.
Eight, yeah, ten.
No, because I, did you do my thing? I forgot about sales tax, we get dinged on that, earn sales tax on these, I don't know, whatever truck we did.
Do we have ten laying around, Sarah?
We don't have a lot around, but, we're gonna have to adjust-
We have some additional funds in our equipment, CIP, and then we shuffle a couple of things on the CIP, like a year or two, some of the smaller equipment to make up for it, but we always have some extra just in case we need.
Does anyone have any other questions about a purchase of this vehicle? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
So, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion on this?
What are we doing with the old one?
That's gonna be the next topic, I'm gonna give permission, so.
No other discussion, motions remain second, uh, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Uh, with that, I'd like to have permission to sell our nineteen ninety-one thirty-seven foot international boom truck on Min Mid. We did good on the pickup on there. Uh, if you read in my thing, they said don't hold for a lot of money for it, they would actually offer us in the four thousand dollar range on the trade-in, so. You know, with all these things we're trading in, you're getting nothing for them right now, so. But I think we should just get rid of the truck right away then, if we don't have room.
How soon can you take possession of this one?
Huh?
How soon would you take possession of the-
Once we can do a paperwork transfer, because it's already been serviced down there, that's what their plant does, the other repair shop does down there, was doing.
It's not gonna be like the back truck.
That took a year?
Well, where we had to service it then again after it came in. Wasn't there something else we had to do to it then, once we got it?
I don't remember.
Oh, I do.
There was.
So anyways, um, yeah, I'd look for a motion to sell it on Min Mid, is that what you said?
I think we'll use Min Mid.
I move we put it on Min Mid.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Jared, or Brandon, excuse me. Any other discussion on that? There's too many Jareds here tonight.
We're not gonna put any money into this, uh, the old truck to sell, right?
No.
It's just the way it is.
As is.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, motions were made and seconded, uh, all four say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Just one other quick thing, the family of Dr. Holdridge, or Holdridge Memorial Park is, um, named after. Several years back, I was actually, before I took, when Jim was here, they gave us some money and we did some, um, a couple things in the park, I know it was a sign out front, this and that. Uh, one of the daughters, I believe it is, contacted me, the family'd like to donate some money to redo that memorial out there, um, this summer if we can do something. We're still in the early part of this, I've talked to Sarah, they wanna, they're gonna make like a five thousand dollar donation, it's gotta be earmarked to the fixing of that, you know, it's, it's an earmark, Sarah says we can do that. So, uh, I just wanted, I don't need anything tonight, it's why I gave a heads up, you might start seeing something come through. Just got an email, what, yesterday, I said, what are you thinking about? It was interesting what they wanna do, I'm not a designer, so I'm gonna need some help of, you know, hopefully they'll help me or put me in the right... Those wings were granite before and now they're tore out and they're reports cement, they wanna do something, that's what they're looking at, clean up around it, put some shrubs and whatever around there and, they had a whole bunch of little things on there, what they're looking to do. So, it's more of an informational thing at this time in case, also you guys here see something of that, but there, the hope is they're gonna pay for the majority of this, unless also we do some extra stuff, so. With that, I don't think I have anything else unless you guys have a question for me on either this side or fire side.
Nobody? Alright, Administration, Sarah Brown.
Uh, first item, um, I was provided information on no mow May, um, and, um. The gentleman that provided the information wanted you to consider, um, possibly implementing a no mow May, um, for the reasons that listed in your packets, some information. Um, if you do want to do it, there is a sample resolution that I also included. Um, I'm just looking for direction if there's something you want to consider. Um, if you do, I just ask that you're real clear about, um, how you want staff to handle, you know, enforcement and stuff like that, because. We just want to make sure we're, everybody's on the same page on what we're doing. So, I guess I'll leave it to you if you want to do anything with this.
I, I'm sorry, I support it. A, we don't generally get warm enough to have big tall grass in May. The bees love my creeping Charlie and my one or two dandelions. It's a small thing. It's a passive thing that does make an environmental difference. I don't think in Foley, we need to worry too much about May weeds. My flowers don't even come up in May. Because it's too cold. I think it's a way to bring together. People in the community that have an environmental bent towards what they believe and feel. I did it last year and I didn't have to have Katie come and tell me to cut my weeds.
So, what this, just help me understand this. If you decide not to mow your lawn. You're fine as far as any weed control or tall grass ordinance.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, we wouldn't enforce it.
And it's not. It's, it's voluntary, if you want to do it or not.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But it would just basically, if you pass the resolution indicating you want to do that, um, law enforcement, we wouldn't, we wouldn't issue the citation. If the weeds get to the point of your, violation of the ordinance.
Anyone else have anything to add on this? So people can still mow their lawn.
Oh, yeah, that's what I would recommend you do, yeah. You just allow people the opportunity if they want to participate.
Mark, go ahead.
If we do this, do we have to adhere by it in the parks?
No, it says a thought, no.
But I mean, as a city, you're backing this. They're gonna get along and we're gonna get so far about, you know, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to you guys doing it, do what you want. I'm all with that. Just, I don't want to have to not mow any if also the parks are getting.
I know a couple of communities that their parks are not part of it. This is something any citizen can do. If their landlord's even, I mean, if their landlord says no, it's a no.
Sure.
But this is a, a thing we can do if we have that little environmental bee in our brain bugging us. You know, it's, it's not, you have to do it.
I think we have to mow the parks because.
I agree.
We have, um, early graduation parties in May where people will have parties before, before graduations. You're, you're not gonna want to. I'm, I'm not, I don't want to attend a party that's got twelve inch grass all over the place and.
Well, I wouldn't want to have them to catch up on grass after Memorial Weekend. I mean, you know, I just. This is a home, a home person's thing.
So with that said, anyone else have any questions?
Common sense can be a guide.
Yep.
So would you like me to come back with the resolution for April?
Sure.
Um, other than that, um, we are working on, um, acquisition of property for the order control structure. We're having a meeting, a public hearing with Benton County and Minden Township to acquire the property needed. Um, that's gonna be on Wednesday, March fifteenth. And, um, I think the mayor is gonna attend. It's actually a county board action that happens, but, um, we're gonna have some city representation there. Um, and then hopefully we will, um, move forward with the rest of that process so that we can get ready for that construction to happen this spring. Um, and then, um, maybe the other thing I'll just mention is audits coming up in April. So, um, you may be reached, an auditor may reach out with some questions, that's normal. Um, and we do have the federal audit this year, so that is quite the bear, so, um. Uh, we will be working through that this year and a number of items related to that and the federal money that we receive for the wastewater project, so. Um, if you have any questions, concerns, anything, let me know. Um, I'll probably send an email reminder out too when it gets closer, just to let you know. Um, you can always stop in if you want to visit with the auditors, and they will be here when the report is done in June, so you will get a full report. Um, on the activities and what they, what they reviewed, so. Other than that, we have a lot to keep us busy, so, um, any questions for me?
Do we know anything, do we know if Gerard is going to Colstrip yet as a representative of Foley?
I do not know for certain, but I can certainly ask him when I see him next.
I'd appreciate it if you would. I mean, because I, I am going because of family connection, so. I'd like to know if he's going, just because.
Yeah, we got a very nice response from them.
I thought that was.
Yeah, and that's stuffed in your package.
I'm glad you included it.
Yeah. Um, I will check though. We can certainly check on that.
Thank you. And then I have, I don't know if this is the place to bring it up, but the bonding issue has made it, it's in the Senate right now. Unfortunately, and I'm politically, I don't care, okay, but. The Republicans announced yesterday that they are going to try to block the bonding bill. And we're seeing that in how some of it's being voted. Our voices matter. And I'm sorry, but it's time to tell the people we voted in. That you represent us, not the party, you represent us. And we cannot, most of us can't afford another jackup in our sewer bill, which will happen, and it will be bigger. If we don't get the bonding bill. We can write letters to our representatives and our senators. And we can do it to any particular senator. We don't need to just go to those voted by our district. Because the majority of Minnesota is rural. You contact them and you say, hey, if I need to, I'll be writing to your local paper. Because other small towns are in our same pinch. This is big money and it affects our community. And the more people contacting and talking, the more power we have. Thanks for listening to my rant.
Well, that can lead us right into number eleven.
I, I can just add on that item too. Um, we are still moving ahead with the alternative language that would allow for reimbursement. Um, and that is because some of the conversations we have had is there may be some time before that bonding bill would make it through the Senate side. So we are gonna move ahead with that other option, um, to put us in the best position as possible. Um, so that, those are, those conversations are happening and a number of the legislators are seeing the same thing, that there may be some time yet before anything is through, but.
But May's not that far away.
Again, I encourage you. Yeah, I encourage, I, you know, it, it is always good to reach out to your representatives. That's always good for everybody to do that and stay in constant communication with them.
And then, New, uh, Wessenberger.
Yeah, we're, we were asked to testify, so we will be testifying, uh, the mayor, myself, we'll work together on that. Um, for the bonding bill. Um, hopefully this week, I'm hoping Thursday, there's supposed to be another capital investment meeting Thursday. Um, otherwise, if it's next week, there's a lot of projects on that list, so I, I know they're very busy, but we will do everything we can to, to advocate for our cause.
And if you get a phone call that I'm busy, I appreciate if anyone can come and be on the Zoom call.
Yeah.
Any other old business come before us?
Well, I did, uh, as long as we're talking about representation, I did have a nice conversation last Thursday with Senator Putnam at his town hall meeting. He knows that, uh, we've been bombarding him with our emails. He's receptive to what we need in the bonding issue. And he's going to do his best. I also had a nice conversation with, uh, Commissioner Persky, and he's definitely on our side, and he's definitely pushing for. Our issue on the P-Sig money, so there is some. There is some bright spots ahead. I still think, like Deb said, put the pressure on him. Um, I think what we're gonna see is jockeying from both parties. But our voice has to be heard, no matter who it is, so keep the emails going.
And we, I did confirm, we are in the money with what's in there. I did confirm that with PFA as well. But the House passed, at least.
Very good. Any other old business?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you want to bring up the broadband?
No, go ahead.
Well. Last Friday, uh, Deb and I had a Zoom meeting with, uh, the commissioners and, uh, a couple of other representatives of the broadband being brought into Foley. They know that, their issue is they're trying to find a provider to actually light up the, uh, broadband. We told them that I think the, uh, overall consensus is we'd like to keep it local, we'd like to keep our business local. Uh, no one is stepping up to say they want to charge the whole system. There's two hundred, I believe, two hundred eighty-eight strands. They're not looking at one company to charge all of it. Uh, the commissioners are very open to getting it charged up, so. They're going back to look at, talk to Arvig, talk to, uh, Benton Co-op, and see if they can't come to some kind of agreement. Uh, they'll get back to us as soon as they find something.
Mark.
Yeah, watch what I say. I do talk to the commissioner. They've reached a tentative agreement on some.
Good. Sarah, I'm just gonna have you wait till open forum. That's okay. Any other, uh, new business? Second open forum.
I, well, I just think of the water bill, if we were upfront with what we are potentially seeing for a real water rate every month. I think people would be more responsive and more go after their representatives if they know, but it's always wishy-washy. It could be increased or couldn't, if the bill goes through, and if you were just flat out honest, if you know a dollar amount, what residents are gonna see. Say it, because then they're gonna get mad and then they're gonna talk. People, they don't know, they don't care. But if they know, hey, you're looking at a ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents monthly bill to pay back this nineteen year loan, people are gonna be mad. So people are very, very mad right now. I had several families reach out to me, thinking I'm on the council, saying, we're suffocating. I said, show up at the council meeting, but if you guys know a dollar amount, say it, and people will get mad. They'll start their little keyboard courage, but.
Thank you.
Hope you know it.
Anyone else for open forum? If not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Good job, Brandon. Thanks, you did all the, you did all the heavy lifting. Didn't call you Jared at least.